And welcome to the July 19th, 2022, meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please stand and identify themselves for the record by stating their name and address. Seeing none, at this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode. Counselor Squallia, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Substitute Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Squallia.
Present.
Counselor Van Hozenga.
Present remotely.
President Zarella.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Kuchar.
Here.
Counselor Craigin. Counselor Cruz.
Here.
Counselor De Natale.
Here remote.
Counselor Fleming. Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Thank you very much. The public have been advised to contact the clerk's office regarding any comments of no more than two minutes. None were brought to our attention. If there is anyone present this evening who would like to address the council on any item on our agenda, please approach the center podium, identify yourself by name and address, indicate the agenda item on which you wish to speak, and you may speak for not more than two minutes. Seeing none, we have a report of the Appointments Committee. I notice Counselor Green.
Yes, thank you. So appointments met tonight and took up the following appointments. New appointment for the Pittsburgh Historical Commission, term to expire July 1st, 2025, Mr. Andrew Lapasty, that was granted. Second zoning board of appeals, term to expire January 1st, 2025, to Mr. Eric Chartrand, that was granted. Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire October 1st, 2023, to Mr. James Reynolds, granted. To the Conservation Commission, term to expire August 1st, 2025, that was Ms. Joyce Jacobs, granted. Full-time student police officers for the Pittsburgh Police Department, Kyle Batalas, Sean McHugh, Florencia Rivas, Krish Kakla, and Travis McCauley, all approved. Move to accept the report.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the chief a question.
If he's willing.
Chief, did I hear you correctly? You said to the council that all these people were from Pittsburgh?
Yes, each one of them lives in the city of Pittsburgh. Mr. President, city councilors, you know, it's my pleasure to present these five future police officers. This council is in a unique position. We're going through a large hiring process, through a lot of attrition, and what you're seeing come before you is the future of the Pittsburgh Police Department. We've been very, very fortunate to attract some of the finest candidates in the state, and what I presented this evening is nothing short of that. So we continue to aggressively recruit people of the highest standards, and what you see before you tonight is what was confirmed by the Appointments Committee, and I thank you for your support.
Mr. Chief, then that number brings you up to what, these five?
I go the other way. We're still six short. So out of eighty-three, we're still recruiting six more police officers that were trying to get into the academy sometime this fall, and that will get me up to my budget allowance of eighty-three sworn officers.
Okay, and one final thing. Andy DiMaitino wants me to say congratulations to the young lady right there. Right there.
Proud of them all. And once again, thank you for the support this evening.
Thank you, Chief.
Move to accept the report of the committee.
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved.
Mr. President, in keeping with tradition, I know the clerk's not here this evening. Would it be possible for my new student officers to take some pictures in council chambers?
Absolutely, that's just what I was going to say, that due to the absence of the clerk, we won't have the swearings in.
I appreciate that.
But I would ask that councilors clear at least the center of the bench.
Can we shake their hands too?
As many pictures as you like.
Gentlemen, go around, ladies, go around to the councilors, please.
Congratulations again.
We're going to return to session. Next, we have the, oh.
Counselor Cruz.
Counselor Cruz, report of the committee on records.
Sorry, the records appear to be in order.
You can go around the mic.
My apologies, thank you, Mr. Chair, the records appear to be in order.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Motion second to accept. If there are no objections, we'll take it under unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is accepted. We have some communications from His Honor, the mayor, a reappointment of George J. Burke II to the Council on Aging, poll workers for the period of September 1st through, 2022 through August 31st, 2023, and a letter regarding the final financial report of the City Hall project. Given that that promises to be rather detailed, I would ask consent to waive the reading and place it on file with the clerk.
So moved.
Thank you. We also have a communication from the city clerk. I am going to read that off in full because she is not with us this evening, and I don't know what she had intended to say to the council about this. Dear President Zarella, on June 22nd, the election reform law, the Votes Act, was signed into law by Governor Baker. The Votes Act makes many of the changes from the pandemic permanent, including vote by mail and early in-person voting. In addition, the assignment of police officers at polling places now requires a vote of the city council. The city of Pittsburgh has six voting precincts. For each election, one police officer is assigned to each precinct during voting hours. Each police officer is responsible for delivering ballots, polling lists, and voting machines to their assigned precinct in the morning and back to City Hall at the end of the night. In addition, we utilize two officers, one who monitors the parking lots and entrances to polling locations, and one who is present at City Hall as ballots are returned after the polls have closed. I am seeking your recommendations for the number of police officers we would be using at the state primary September 6th, 2022, and state election on November 8th, 2022. I would like to request that we utilize eight police officers for the 2022 state and primary, state primary and state election. I have attached a letter from Police Chief Ernie Martino in support of the number of officers recommended on election days. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you sincerely, Joanna Bellotta, City Clerk. Chief, did you have anything to add to that? Or shall I just read off your letter?
I can give you a synopsis of what my letter is. The clerk had sent me a request this past week to review the change and asked my opinion on moving forward, how many police officers or if police officers are needed at the polling area. I explained to her that I believe over the last thirty-plus years, we've had police officers stationed at the polling stations throughout the city. You know, and it provides a sense of security when it comes to elections, when you have a uniformed police officer there. Currently, we have six police officers working in different polls. I always assign a captain to be in charge of the overall operations so you have the highest level of command overseeing the election process, and then I do have one floater. So I concurd with the clerk that continuing with eight would be the reasonable thing to do, and I express my concern that it's, I believe it's extremely important to have a police officer present in uniform at the polls during those times.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? Counselor Boishman.
Are you saying to me, to us, that there was six all the time, or eight, at every election?
As long, I've been a police officer for thirty-five years. As long as I remember, we've always had one at every poll, and I think we increased it, we increased to a floater a few years back, maybe a decade ago, but we've always had eight police officers working the polls, whether it's a primary or the general election.
All right.
Given that this does not fall squarely within the purview of any committee, I do not believe that our rules require us to refer it to committee. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the eight police officers assigned to polls.
Make a motion, then we approve it.
Second.
Motion and second. Can I ask that the motion be withdrawn for a moment?
Hold on here.
The city solicitor appears to have a comment.
All right, I withdraw to the chair.
Thank you. Solicitor Priscilla Terry.
I would ask that you proceed on your current course, but I just wanted to note, I think there is an actual document entitled "Vote", and we would probably place that on the agenda if I review your action this evening and decide that we want to have a more formal vote consistent with the Votes Act.
Certainly. If there is such a document required, I would ask that it be forwarded to the city clerk for inclusion on the agenda of the already scheduled special meeting of the city council so that we can get this taken care of before the break.
I make my motion again.
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Report of the Finance Committee, Counselor De Natale.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance met last Wednesday and took up a slew of orders. Just briefly run through them here. $50,000 transfer from reserve for other municipal purposes, capital expenses, and credited to police capital expenditures, building renovation, for the purpose of contracting for designer services. That was adopted. $125,000 acceptance of a Massachusetts Collaborative for Action Leadership and Learning, three substance misuse prevention grant for the purpose of said grant, which is to prevent and reduce misuse of substances of first use among youth. That was an additional grant on top of one that we already voted on, that was 77-21. The same applies to the next two, within the Board of Health and the Massachusetts Public Health Network Collaborative. Additional grant funds on existing program that we've already accepted. 210-22 was, 210-22 through 213-22 were all orders pertaining to grant acceptances, three from the Mass Department of Aeronautics Division, and one from the FAA pertaining to scores of improvements and upgrades at the municipal airport, which includes upgrading the cameras, repairing the roofs on hangars two and three, repairing the doors on hangars two and three, and upgrading the fuel farm. Altogether was roughly $160,000, $170,000 in state and federal grant funds for all that.
Move to accept the report of the Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion and second to accept the report of Finance Committee. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is accepted. Report of the Committee on Public Safety, Counselor Green.
Yes, thank you. So Public Safety met tonight. We had one petition in front of us, number 214-22, Desolate Auto Incorporated to petition for a Class II dealer's license located at 650 John Fitch Highway. That was motion and approved.
Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept. I am going to take this by roll call simply because I do not have the clerk on hand to ask if the grant of a license requires a threshold vote. Mr. Substitute Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hozenga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Craigin, sorry. Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor De Natale.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. We have orders finance. We have a request to suspend the rules on all four of these so that we can get them taken care of before the break.
So moved.
So moved.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on orders 216-22 through 219-22. Mr. Substitute Clerk, would you please call the roll for a two-thirds vote?
Counselor Squallia.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hozenga.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor De Natale.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. And Auditor Brooks, you are free to either take the podium or speak from the chair seat as you see fit. The first up is 216-22, an order that thereby is transferred from within the FY22 budget, the sum of $397,000. Same to be credited to employee benefits health insurance, transferred from the following accounts. $205,000 from the Monty Tech School Assessment, $140,000 from Veterans Benefits Cash Benefits, $17,000 from Reserve for Snow and Ice Removal, and $35,000 from Reserve for Capital Expenses. Auditor Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is basically cleaning up a shortfall from the FY2022 budget in the health insurance line item. It's, there's a shortfall of about $400,000 right now. It's basically caused by underestimating the increase in the number of employees, which was primarily in the school department, and their decision to sign up for health insurance. So I think in FY22, we had a lot of people return to work that hadn't, or positions filled, that hadn't been filled the prior year because of the pandemic, and that just brought our costs higher than what we had expected. The source of funding is just from balances remaining in various accounts. The Monty Tech assessment, as I had said, at Finance Committee, had excess funds because the actual assessment we paid was less than what had been originally assessed to us by Monty Tech. Once the state budget was passed last year, they had additional funds and lowered their assessment for the city of Pittsburgh. Cash benefits for veterans, there was a reduction in the number of veterans applying for benefits, and so there was excess funds in that account. And then in the snow and ice reserve and capital reserve, we had leftover money from FY2022 that we did not spend. And looking ahead to FY23, I do not expect this to be a problem. I think we've addressed what's going on in the budget for next year.
Before I go to Counselor Green, I just want to confirm for my own benefit and peace of mind, this will not result in any reduction of the availability of benefits to our veterans, correct? This is just surplus that had been appropriated for that purpose?
Correct. And on Monday, the Veterans Director did authorize the release of those funds.
Excellent, okay.
I'm not sure if that had gotten to the city councilors or not, but that is one of the requirements of the statute, that the department that's giving up the funds has to agree to it.
Excellent. Counselor Green.
Yeah, my question for the $17,000 for snow and ice, that was left over, and do we have to worry about putting that back in for this year's budget? Or has that been credited, will it be credited at some point to get that back? So when they come before us in February and say they need $900,000 for snow and ice removal, after, I mean, not that $17,000 out of their budget is a big deal, but every dollar in DPW is a big deal.
Correct. And this is coming out of last year's budget, so it's the year we've already been through. This was part of the original $675,000 reserve that we put into last year's budget.
Okay.
That we've been pulling out of over the course of the year, and then I think we did have some extra funds that we used in May to fund some DPW projects.
Okay, so have we reached the max of that $675?
So the seventeen eliminates it. In the FY23 budget, there is another $675,000.
Okay.
Reserve.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counselor De Natale.
This is FY22 money, and the year is closed. So this is all excess funding. It doesn't have any impact on FY23. This is just closing accounts where they're over or under with unspent funds. It has no bearing whatsoever on the current fiscal year and the budget we already passed last month, none whatsoever. So I know Mr. Brooks mentioned that. I just want to reemphasize that, that this has no bearing on FY23. This is basic year-end closing of accounts and saddling up where we're short and where we're not short. That's all it is.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz.
I just had one question.
Yes, sir.
About the capital expense, was that something we didn't buy that we were supposed to buy, that they changed their minds on?
So this is the reserve that goes into the original budget, and it's basically money we're putting into the budget to help build up our debt service capacity so that as we begin to have to fund debt for coming up to Crocker School and the library, we have sufficient room in the budget without having to make major cuts. So we have a reserve. We used all but $35,000 of it out of last year's budget, and it was just, if we hadn't, if we don't do this, then it just closes to free cash.
Okay, so it was a reserve, it came from a reserve.
It came from a reserve, yes, thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
So, Mr. Brooks, Kelvin Brooks, so you're actually telling me that I didn't do my homework right when I was going over the budget? Because we had a surplus of $400,000? Two, three, almost four?
Okay, is your question that last June, when you voted it, there was extra money in the budget?
Yeah.
And I'm going to say, you did your homework well, but in the course of the year, things changed, circumstances changed, and we ended up with extra money.
All right. And that is why we have free cash every year, because it's impossible to anticipate at the beginning of the year how much each line item is going to cost if it's not a planned expenditure of a certain fixed amount. But that doesn't necessarily mean there was money to cut in the budget because we could very well have ended up not having this excess. That said, do I have a?
Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Next, we have an order that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from Massachusetts Department of Fire Service Grant in the approximate amount of $1,806.74 for the purpose of said grant, which is to maintain the safe trailer which is used in teaching fire safety.
Hey, councilors, thank you for your time. Yes, this money comes from the Department of Fire Services, and it's basically just the money that we use to maintain the trailer, just like you said. This money is spent on things as updating the props, electronics, electrical breaks. This past year, for the winter, we bought a new cover, so things like that, that's what the money is spent on.
Counselor Boishman.
Do you use all that money, the $1,900 or $1,800?
We do.
You do?
Yep.
Every year, exact amount, $1,800?
We can carry it forward so we don't lose it. So whatever we don't use will be added. Yeah, we use it all. Firefighter Fratasselli does a great job, and he stretches it as much as he can. But yeah, we try to spend it all.
Okay, thank you. Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept 217-22. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. 218-22, order that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services, Department of Mental Health, grant in the approximate amount of $65,000 for the purpose of said grant, which is to support a police-based jail diversion program for individuals with mental illnesses or emotional disturbances. Chief Martino.
Thank you. First of all, councilors, thank you for taking this under suspension this evening because this will allow me to continue on a very vital program that my department offers, our citizens here in the city. We've been very fortunate to have this grant from the Department of Mental Health for the last six, seven years now. This grant supports my crisis intervention team. What my crisis intervention team does is they go out weekly on any call of service that happened in the city of Pittsburgh that has some type of mental health connection. And with your support tonight, we're going to continue doing the same.
Counselor Green.
With the work that's now being done, not only at the CHC, but with our outreach department as well, is $65,000, is that the max that this grant can be? Are you utilizing the max of this grant?
That's the max that we get. That $65,000 goes to the salaries for police officers to go out after hours with the clinical team from CHL. And that has proved to be sufficient over the last several years. We usually do one or two deployments a week based on the amount of calls of service that have some type of mental health component to it, and then we provide services with those clinicians from CHL.
And is CHL the one that makes the determination on which calls fall under this category for help, or?
No, we provide CHL with the information based on whatever call comes into the attention of the police department.
Okay.
So whatever call we may respond to that has some type of connection, if someone is in some type of stress environment, or if someone's in a crisis, it will get labeled as a mental health call for service. And then it's traumatized, then it's prioritized by the CHL clinicians on which is the most important that they got to get out right away, all the way down to, well, this may be just a phone call. So it's evaluated weekly, those calls.
Thank you again. I commend you and your department for recognizing that, yeah, because people that may have emotional disturbances don't necessarily mean they need to end up in jail. So I appreciate you acknowledging that.
And I don't want the council to get this confused with our recent larger grant where we're hiring in-house clinical support. That's going to be in addition to this program here. So as you can see, we're bringing all these different subsets of professionals into our departments to really address some serious concerns in our community. So this is separate from what you've heard me talk about with our other clinical support position that we're bringing in.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Squawley.
Thank you, chief. That last statement was going to be my question, basically, is our new mental health clinician, do they work with our crisis intervention team? But they're completely separate, or they work together?
They're separate, but they're not separate. We chose, when we received the grant, to hire the full-time clinician. And just to give you an update on that, we're still in the process of interviewing. As hard as it is to hire police officers, it's even harder to hire clinicians right now. And when we wrote the grant, our primary healthcare provider was CHL. Because we had such a great relationship with CHL under this crisis intervention model, we chose to go with them as our healthcare provider for this full-time position. They're the ones that are actually bringing the position into the police department. So to answer your question, they're both under the same healthcare provider, CHL, but they have slightly two different missions. One is addressing substance use disorders, homelessness issues. The other one is very general when it comes to mental health crisis and response. They will overlap at some point. So the simple answer is yes, they are working together, but yes, they have different roles.
And our CHL, our mental health clinician and our crisis intervention team, this is like an agency of multiple different on-call mental health clinicians?
Specifically, it's centered through CHL. So all of our clinical support will come from them. And then the law enforcement piece is our officers that are trained at a higher level on mental health recognition and response. They're the ones that work directly with the clinicians.
Thank you to the police department for your work in getting this grant every year and continuing this, you know, assistance with mental illness.
You're welcome.
And chief, I apologize, because this is a question that just occurred to me, so I'm sorry if I'm putting you on the spot at all. But if you have a call that is not categorized by dispatch as a call for mental health services, but upon responding, the officer either finds the person in an agitated state, or the person becomes unstable during the course of the interaction, is there a sort of rapid line that they can use to get a clinician out there?
It happens frequently. It gets reclassified by the responding officer. Keep in mind, our entire department is trained in the first level of mental health response, which is required by the MPTC. But then additionally, I have over 50% of our department that has extensive training in crisis response. So that happens quite frequently, where they recognize something and they raise it to the next level. And our relationship with CHL, we can get clinicians on the phone pretty quickly, but a lot of times, they're out there two days a week, and it's an immediate response with a police officer to try to find the appropriate response for that person that's in crisis at that time.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
I had an inkling that you were already on top of it, but I figured I would ask, and I'm glad I did.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Cruz, is this a question for the chief?
Yes, it is.
I'll resend.
Counselor Cruz, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief Martino, you just mentioned that one will be for homelessness abuse outreach, and one will be more general. Is the full-time clinician the more general one?
The full-time clinician was written specifically for substance use disorder with a caveat of homelessness issues and mental health issues, because quite frankly, somehow they all intertwine. But the grant was specifically written to deal with substance use disorders and the treatment options available to them in that perspective. We're partnering up with Gamma, utilizing their recovery coaches that will eventually work with this clinician once we can discover who we're going to hire. So there's a couple of different subsets, but the full-time position is geared specifically towards substance use disorder.
And the CHL clinicians, they work in other cities, of course, right? They're not just with Pittsburgh?
They do, they do. Like, the current ones under this grant, they have a full-time job with CHL, and then they come to us after hours to do the outreach as it relates related to generalized calls for mental health service. But they do work in the region. And hopefully, once we have that person hired, that full-time position will be specifically directed to us. We just went through some restrategizing, how we were going to try to attract a clinician, but the entire state's having difficulty right now hiring clinicians.
Thank you, chief. I'm excited that we're going to continue to attack this head-on and not slap the handcuffs on people in crisis. So thank you very much for your work.
I as well.
The floor.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved.
Thank you.
21922, order that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from Federal Railroad Administration Office of Railroad Policy and Development grant in the approximate amount of $42,892 for the purpose of said grant, which is to support mobilizations that will enforce trespass prevention on railroad property.
Thank you. First of all, before I begin, I'd like to give credit to Christie Fisher once again through her hard work and dedication and exceptional grant-writing skills. The previous year, we were awarded $10,000 from the Railroad Administration. Through her grant efforts this year, you can see that the Railroad Administration increases to $42,000 because of the exceptional work she did presenting that grant application to the Federal Railroad Administration. Last year, we utilized the $10,000, which went fairly quickly. We were putting deployments out on our railroad lines throughout the city. I don't want people or the council to get confused between the rail trail and the rail lines, because quite frankly, it's two different entities. The Railroad Administration contacted my office several years ago because Pittsburgh had, I wouldn't say an abundance, but we had some train strikes and some near-train strikes because of the amount of foot traffic that happens primarily downtown between Market Basket. And because of those potential train strikes and strikes, they wanted us to take increased enforcement, and they were offering us money to go out there and do just that. So we wrote that grant the first year, and we were very successful. And it wasn't about just throwing cuffs on people down on the tracks to, you know, get them out of there. We were trying to educate people. So we had police officers out there on patrol, on overtime, at no expense to the city, you know, enforcing the regulations about trespassing on railroad property. And as we move forward in this fiscal year with this $42,000, one can imagine there is some overlap between the railroad and the rail trail. Their proximity is very close. So I anticipate some involvement on the rail trail to include somewhere down around Costum World on Water Street because of the proximity there. So I'm going to try to utilize this extra money to kind of deal with two matters that are going to be presented with the police department, just not the railroad property, but anything on the rail trail that's adjacent to railroad property. So this $42,000 will definitely go a long way. It will supplement the overtime, and I won't have to go to my overtime budget to do what I think is an important issue.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
Yes, chief. Do you know what the numbers for service calls have been for railroad-only trespass? Not rail trail, railroad?
Shame on me, I should have looked that up before coming tonight. I do not have the... I can share it with the council present. I completed my annual report, and that data should be in my annual report that the council's going to get, but I don't have that tonight for you, councilor.
Is it a lot?
There's a lot of traffic down there. There's a lot of traffic. I mean, the fencing eliminated some of it, but we still have a continued amount of traffic that goes between Central Plaza, downtown, Middle Street, over to the old Pittsburgh Gas Yard. So we still have a lot of, put it this way, that the federal government wouldn't be giving us $42,000 unless they saw a need. I believe only us and Worcester Police Department received this federal grant to address issues on rail trails throughout the Commonwealth, so.
And what, if any, is our communication with the railroad specifically about what they need to do to keep their property safe and secured?
That's a great question, because the railroad is very unique. There's like seven different entities within the railroad structure world. Everybody has a claim to those tracks, and everybody has their own police agency, whether it's Conrail, MBTA. There's like five to seven different agencies that have jurisdiction down there. And because they're mostly centralized in Boston and Worcester, at some of the larger yards, a lot of the enforcement comes upon us. And that's why they approached me and said, can you provide the personnel? I said, I can if you give me the money. I can't go to my overtime budget, thus the money that you see before us today. So it's a unique property, it's a unique jurisdiction area on how many people are responsible for that.
Right, because I do hate to see the police, and again, I'm appreciative of the grant and the work that Christie did to increase that, you know, $32,000. But, you know, do I feel that it lies solely on our police department to maintain that? Not really. I mean, I would like to see the railroad itself take responsibility for keeping their property safe and secure.
It's come up in discussions, just like every other agency there, stretched thin. This is something that I told them that we can only do on a volunteer overtime basis to get some personnel down there. And to be honest with you, the tracks run through our city, and I consider it my responsibility as well. So if I can provide the officers down there to prevent one strike, then it's worth the $42,000 that I'm putting out there. But we've made it clear, especially with the MBTA, I have a good relationship with the commissioner of the MBTA Police Department. He does send up resources when I request it. So we do have a good worker relationship with the T, but that's only one entity. You know, I'm still dealing with Main Central, like I told you. When you have an incident on the train tracks, there's a lot of uniforms there, and you're trying to figure out whose jurisdiction it really is. So it's a challenge, but this is an opportunity to try to reduce any potential injuries to anybody that may be crossing down there.
No, and again, I, you know, applaud the effort, yeah, for the effort, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Very briefly, I'm sure it's probably another number that you don't have off the top of your head, which is fine, but what's the approximate proportion, since we were talking about mental health just a few moments ago, what's the approximate proportion of accidental versus suicidal train strikes and near-strikes?
You're right, I don't have that. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
That's another great question. I'm sure I could find out that. Keep in mind that when it does become a death investigation, it's outside of our jurisdiction. It's usually either being handled by the state police. No, it is being handled by the state police. They have the ultimate jurisdiction. The determination if it was suicide versus accidental versus criminal, that data is all over the place. So that would be hard for me to give you a precise...
That's fine, I just figured out.
What that breakdown is.
Like I said, I was just, I thought of it because we had been talking about mental health, and you had mentioned accidents, and I was just curious.
I'll be honest, yeah, I've seen all different versions over the years. I've seen the suicides, I've seen the accidental, and I've seen the criminal part of it. But there's a reason why the feds reached out to us, because they were asking us, can you help us? And, you know, they provided the funds to let me help them.
Certainly, and I'm glad that you're able to. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and second to approve 21922. If there is no objection, we'll take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Thank you again. Thank you, chief. 19822, a loan order that the city appropriate the amount of $4,800,000 for the purpose of paying costs of an accelerated repair project at the Arthur M. Longeshoe Middle School located at 98 Academy Street to replace windows and doors as outlined. This is its final reading.
Move to send...
On a motion.
We don't have a motion yet. Do you have a comment you'd like to make?
How much do I get a comment? I wouldn't support it, but I just want to make the comment today, city auditor. And my comment would be, I'm hoping that we can pay this off without taking a loan, the $1.154 million. No loan, pay it off if we can, all possible. I know you can make the numbers work.
Wizard of Oz, right.
Move to send 19822 through its final reading, enrolled or inadvertised?
Second. Thank you. I have a motion and second to pass the loan order 19822 through its final reading. Mr. Substitute Clerk, would you please call the roll for a two-thirds vote?
Counselor Squawley.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hozinger.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
If the numbers work, yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we do need an actual non-conditional vote.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
That's nine votes.
Thank you very much. It passes unanimously. Next, we have... Solicitor Prusiteri, I've got a note on my script here, and I wanted to confirm. Are we handling 18820? Are you requesting suspension on 18822 this evening, or is that still going to the special session?
I'd like, Mr. President, thank you. I'd like to ask if your body can pull 18822 forward from Legislative Affairs, which was committed, had been in the subcommittee for at least two sessions now, and your rules will allow you to pull this forward.
Yes.
I discussed that with the clerk, and she was kind enough to place this on the agenda for that purpose.
Okay, excellent. So is the intent that it be pulled from Legislative Affairs and held for the special session?
My request tonight would be to have it pulled from Legislative Affairs and then suspend the rules, and I'd like to have it before the body tonight, if that be acceptable.
All right. So, all right, in that case, I will take 22022 first. There is also a request for suspension on that. This is an order authorizing the city clerk to notify voters of the primary election to be held Tuesday, September 6th.
Move for suspension.
Second.
On the motion? It's a non-debatable motion, but, Mr. Substitute Clerk, would you please call the roll? This is solely for the suspension, not for the vote.
Counselor Squawley.
Aye.
Counselor Van Hozinger.
Yes.
President Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar.
Yes.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes.
Counselor Deena Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The matter is before the council, and Counselor Cruz...
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. The matter is before the council, and Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was more of a general comment about the motion itself. I'm fine with suspending the rules occasionally, but it's becoming a frequent thing and I would prefer a little more notice in the future. That way we can more adequately prepare and do our due diligence to address, instead of thinking it's going to go to finance or Legislative Affairs, that we have the time to adequately prepare for the motions. I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. That sounds fair to me. I would, you know, I will try to remember to send out an email later, but in the meantime, I would ask that any department heads who are present or listening in, if you could please just copy the whole council on any request for suspension...
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Rather than just the president.
On the agenda.
Or alternatively, I could request that the city clerk simply note the request for suspension on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was sent out. It was on the agenda. It was separate.
The item is on the agenda. The suspension, I believe, is only noted on my copy.
All right. I thought it was.
Chief?
Mr. President, if I could just make one comment on that. There's only two department heads here this evening, so if that's what the council would like, I would suggest that you send it out to all department heads in an email form so we're all aware that if we're going to request suspension of the rules, that we CC all city council at this time.
I certainly will. That was my intention. I just figured I would mention it for the people who are...who do happen to be here. And again, I think I may instead simply request that the clerk place it on the agenda, because occasionally there are matters involving suspension that need to be kind of hashed out before they go to the council, and sometimes the suspension can be avoided entirely.
Just to clarify, we suspended 22022. That's what we're talking about right now?
Yes. This was just an administrative matter that I wanted to...
In general.
Clear out. So 2022.
Move to approve 22022. Second.
I'll shake a net. Amy Green shaking it.
I have a motion and second to authorize the clerk to notify the voters as requested. If there are no objections, I'll take this under unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is approved. Mr. Solicitor, Counselor Kuchar indicated you may have had something to add on that?
No, I'm going to just wait.
Okay. All right, so 18822. This is a...an agreement for a cannabis facility.
So he wants to do it?
Yeah. Now, there is...so as the solicitor alluded to, and I take the blame for the delay in Legislative Affairs, under our Rule 4.8, this matter has sat in committee for more than two consecutive council sessions and therefore is brought before the body to either act upon or recommit to committee. That said, Mr. Solicitor?
And just to follow up on that point, so technically, I guess you would say we're not suspending the rules because...
Right.
It's...is it 4.8? It says shall.
Exactly, so it is not a suspension. This is not a suspension.
So I think that it's the same thing, distinction without too much of a difference, perhaps, Counselor Cruz, because we're going to still be asking for you to review this and vote on it tonight, so.
And that will...yes, and that will be at the discretion of the council, of course, but...
Sure.
Sir, I assume you are presenting this petition?
I am, thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Phil Silverman from the law firm of Vicente Sederberg, and I'm here on behalf of a company called Speedy Cannabis. And we are here tonight seeking authorization from the city council for the mayor to negotiate a host community agreement, which would allow my client...
I'm sorry, I need to interrupt for just a moment. I apologize. I remembered just now that I actually have to recuse myself from this for an unspecified conflict of interest. I can't ask the vice president to chair, because I believe the regulations still state that the chair must be physically present. So Counselor Green, are you willing to chair this item?
Sure.
While I recuse myself?
All right, go ahead.
All right, thank you. So what we're here seeking is an authorization for the mayor to negotiate a host community agreement to allow my client to operate a marijuana delivery business at 339 River Street. Marijuana delivery is sort of a new license that the Cannabis Control Commission created, and the city actually doesn't have any of these types of companies here at this time. You may be aware that when the marijuana regulation...when the law was passed and the regulations were passed, there was an idea that social equity clients and economic empowerment clients, people who had been harmed by the war on drugs, would be given sort of a preferential interest in the cannabis industry. But what happened was that just wasn't working out when it was originally done. The fact of the matter was a lot of the retail licenses and cultivation licenses were being given out to large, in many cases, out-of-state companies. And so what the state did is they said, "You know what? We're going to fix that." And one of the things we're going to do is we're going to create this new license for delivery, which didn't exist at that time, and we're going to limit it so that only social equity companies and economic empowerment applicants can operate these for a three-year term. And so this is what this company is. They're seeking to do this type of a delivery business. And it's actually, I believe, a benefit to the city, because what's going to happen here is you're going to receive revenue that you have not received before. So what you may or may not be aware of is marijuana delivery is legal right now in the state and it is ongoing, and I suspect, I little doubt, that it's also ongoing in Pittsburgh. However, the companies that are doing it are not located in Pittsburgh. And so what that means is that these companies, they're located in another jurisdiction, and when a sale occurs in Pittsburgh, you don't get the tax revenue and you don't get the community impact fees from it. That will change if we allow a company like this to go forward. You'll get a 3% tax on every sale made by this company, whether the sale is in Pittsburgh or in some other community. You'll also get an impact fee under this host community agreement. It's 1.25% of gross revenues as well. I should also note that there is, under consideration, a new amendment to state law, which says that if a community decides to host a social equity or economic empowerment applicant in a business, you get an additional 1% of the revenues from that company, which would have otherwise gone to the state, but the state's giving that up now so that the local municipality can get it. So there are financial benefits here that we believe will benefit the city. So we're seeking approval of...authorization for the mayor to enter into a host agreement and happy to take any questions.
I have a comment from city solicitor Pusiteri.
So just for the members of council, this matter was committed to Legislative Affairs, and it was coupled with a zoning amendment. And the thinking at that time was to have the zoning amendment and this work its way through council at the same time. The zoning amendment is going to be required to facilitate or to situate or cite this company at its proposed location. Without that amendment, it will not be zoned. And then in addition to that, this company will then also be going to the planning board and seeking a special permit to operate this delivery company. So this is not approving the citing of the company. You heard from Attorney Silverman, and that's what I've been hearing from him, I'm going to say for about three or four months fairly relentlessly, anxious to get this host agreement signed so that his clients can move forward, not so much in the process in the city of Pittsburgh, but with the Cannabis Control Commission. The host agreement is the linchpin right now that's holding up his application process with the Cannabis Control Commission, and his understanding is, if we approve this, if you approve this tonight, that he can go and continue to incur expenses and take steps with the Cannabis Control Commission, and it may all be for naught, because we may not amend our zoning, or you may not get a special permit. So the decision to have this matter come back from Legislative Affairs and then present it to the body for your approval would be primarily to allow them to get a couple of steps forward at the state level. With that being said, most of us on the council, or most of you on the council, have seen community host agreements. This is a relatively standard-form community host agreement. We amended all of our community host agreements, I think, back in April of 2021. We have brought the standard retail to a 1.3%, I'm sorry, a 2.75%. And the manufacturing was brought to 1.25%. In light of the social equity that's here in this company, and in light of some other reasons, including some pending legislation, we went for 1.25% with this company. And that's a conference I had with Attorney Silverman. And what we...I think the request really is, please allow the applicant to get started at the Cannabis Control Commission by your approval of the order authorizing the order signed.
And I just want to...just to clarify, that 18822, as before us tonight, out of Legislative Affairs, would be only to approve the host agreement?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Squallia?
Thank you. Solicitor Pusiteri, we have a 3% sales tax, right? Not 2.7%.
Sales tax, yes.
Is that...what was the 2.75%?
So the council has voted to have sales tax for retail sales, which this would be included in that, although it's a delivery, it's not a facility that people be walking in and buying. And that decision was to have a 3% tax. The host community fees have been measured in different ways, and what we have done is we measured ours to be 2.75% on retail sales. So in addition to the 3% tax, is a community host fee, and that is a 2.75%.
Is that the five-year?
And that's the five-year payment that happens. And then there's a community host fee that we have for businesses that are like retail...I'm sorry, wholesalers or growers or cultivators, and that's at 1.25%. And we discussed the impacts of this business and we determined to be 1.25%.
Yes. And so the zoning, this property is currently zoned commercial in our new zoning code and I believe in our old one. Is the problem that when we originally passed the cannabis regulations, we didn't include delivery?
Yes, as Attorney Silverman indicated, this is a new use, and we did include delivery in the sense that there was a catch-all provision, which kind of got lumped into what we call retail. So it gets a little confusing, because you have a commercial area, there's alleged to be a retail use, and it doesn't fit the retail definition under the zoning code, and therefore it's not zoned for that area, because it's not a walk-in retail business.
And we only allow eight licenses for walk-in retail?
Yes.
So where does the delivery retail fall into those capped eight licenses?
That's the point of the zoning amendment, because the state regulations have said, "Don't consider this retail." And yet, when we came and tried to get an opinion from the building commissioner, they said, "Well, this is retail. You're up against the eight cap." And I was trying to explain, "The state says you can't do that." And after discussion, we said, "Maybe we should go in and try and get the zoning changed to make it clear for everybody." So that's the idea, is we're going to require that zoning change. We just want to get moving at the state level now, because otherwise it really holds us back four or five months. And when you consider that you only have that three-year exclusivity before everyone's going to be allowed to do it, we really want to get our social equity applicant up and moving to take full advantage of that exclusivity period.
And we haven't seen yet the zoning amendment changes that...
You have not seen that yet. That's been...went to the planning board, it was received planning board approval, it came back to council, and that's also committed to Legislative Affairs. I'd qualify the gentleman's remarks. I would not say that the regulations require us to consider this retail or not consider this retail. I think the gentleman's suggestion is that the state regulations handle it in a certain way at the state level, and that the suggestion is that that's the way we should be handling it. So our new proposed regulation will track closely the way that the state regulations is handling this new delivery.
Exactly, yep.
Okay. And additionally, so you had noted that the state now allows municipalities to get an additional 1% for a social equity applicant. Are you saying that?
That's pending. There's a new law that's going to amend some of the old laws regarding host community agreements, and that has been suggested as one of the provisions in it. So we think that is going to pass within the next two weeks, but it hasn't yet, so...
And are you a social equity applicant?
Yes, yep.
And is it written in our host community agreement? I did not see that line that that would be included.
It's state law, so it'll be automatic if...
If it's passed.
If it's passed.
But it's only a suggestion that may become part of a pending piece of legislation.
Exactly.
I don't want you to make your decision thinking that that extra 1% is going to be here. In fact, I think what we should count on, financially, what we should count on with some certainty would be the 3% tax. And everything else, the host community fees and all these other things, there's pending legislation on all of this stuff. So we'll see how it goes. It also would be helpful, I think, from the municipality's perspective, to have a community host agreement executed before new pending legislation that could have an impact on host agreements. So to me, that would be the second sure reason to move forward. And the reasons not to is you would want this just to simply track with your zoning amendment. And that would prevent them...the positive there would be uniformity and consistency, but the downside would be to prevent the applicant from moving forward with the Cannabis Control Commission.
I'm in support of moving this ahead as quickly as we can to further investment in business in the city of Pittsburgh. I just have a few...one more clarifying question. That is, so 1.25% will be our sales tax on gross revenue for the delivery business that is before us? And is that additionally?
3% is the sales tax. The 1.25% is a separate community impact fee.
The community impact fee is the five-year...
Five-year.
The five-year impact fee.
That's what you're approving now.
And the...so if there's any sales within the city of Pittsburgh, then we get 3%?
You get 3% whether the sales are in Pittsburgh or in Boston or anywhere else?
Really?
Even Lancaster.
Really?
That is correct. That's why I'm suggesting to you, there's revenue that this will capture that you're not capturing right now from your own retailers.
And we...and what you were saying about passing the host agreement prior to any potential changes is they might adjust the community impact fees within new state regulation as well?
Yep, and there can be new reviews coming from the cannabis control commission, which is what we're expecting. The...yeah.
All right. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz?
Yes, Attorney Silverman, I think I'm starting to get some clarity on the delivery-type system. So the cannabis can be bought outside of Pittsburgh, then brought to somebody in Pittsburgh, and we get the 3% tax? Is that how it works?
Yeah, what'll happen...so there's two different types of licenses. One is what's called a delivery courier, and that's, for example, somebody, whether it's in Pittsburgh or out, makes an order at a retailer, and my client goes, picks it up at the retailer, takes it to the customer, okay? That's a small delivery fee. That's kind of like...it's almost kind of like Uber Eats. You could think of it that way. The other type of license is what's called delivery operator, and in that, my client goes out and it buys wholesale, and it stores the product in its vault, in its facility, and it takes its own orders, and it goes out and when it gets the orders, it delivers those. Much, much larger fee there, because the customer is paying for the product, not just the delivery. And you'll get 3% sales tax and 1.25% impact fee.
So does it have to be in Massachusetts, or can it be...
Has to be in Massachusetts.
Has to be in Massachusetts.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman?
Benny, you're telling me...let me explain. He's got to go to the zoning board first, right?
I believe...
Did he go to the planning board already? Did he go to the planning board already?
No. The, so, his application hasn't happened yet with the city of Pittsburgh. What he's asking us to do right now is to approve the community host agreement, so he can go to Boston and start that process. Sometime when we reconvene in September, we're going to start the zoning, we're going to continue the zoning process to amend our zoning ordinance to allow this place to operate at its proposed location. If we do approve that, and that zoning change goes through, he'll have to make a special permit for that process, and that'll bring him back to the planning board. So he's going to go before you tonight to a host agreement, before the Cannabis Control Commission for his state license, and then before, if our zoning passes, before our planning board for a special permit. That's his path. The only thing I would add to that is, we are still going to debate a zoning change. You already have the report, a positive report from the planning board. You have the zoning change committed to Legislative Affairs. That committee has to review the planning board and make its own comments, and that'll come back before city council, and you're going to look at the zoning on the issue.
The reason why I'm asking this question, his delivery is in my ward. And there were some things I didn't like, to be honest with you, that he ran another business from, and I called up numerous times. And I'm hesitant to accept this in my ward, because of the problems that I had. And I talked to you about it before, and, but we didn't, you know... So I understand the host agreement, but I want to know where I stand with the zoning, and I want to know where I stand with the planning problem. I don't want to say, yeah, we're going to go with the host agreement, zoning says okay, the planning does over here, and then I'm back to the same problem with, the same problem we had numerous times when I made complaints. And I'm not pulling the eye over you, I told you, I was the one who complained numerous times.
Well, we have to approve the zoning.
What's that?
Right. What's before us tonight is to approve a host agreement.
I understand that.
To give you permission to move forward.
Given the permission. But what happened, I'm asking him a question. My question is, if it passes his zoning tonight, if he passes when he goes in front, and then it passes the planning, and I'm back into the same problem I had with him before.
I think he's said that it's got to come back before us in several subcommittees before it gets passed again.
So the zoning is going to, may I?
Yes, yes, of course.
The zoning is going to come back before you. And if there are concerns that you have, you'll be able to articulate and lobby your fellow counselors about conditions you believe are the appropriate conditions. The specific, once that zoning passes, this specific applicant won't come back before you, but he will go to the planning board, and you'll have an opportunity to lobby planning board members and appear at the hearing, and to discuss that particular application at that time as well. So there is a benefit. I would encourage you to look favorably on this from the city's perspective, in the sense that I have pending legislation that's going to really change the landscape of the zoning of the community host agreement, and I would like to see this particular one passed and signed by the applicant, by the mayor, prior to any new legislation coming up.
You better say thank you to him.
You also have Counselor Boshman?
I'm also.
Okay, thank you. My question to the city solicitor is, could we take this as an opportunity to maybe set the gold standard on how we move forward with other businesses perhaps like this that want to do the delivery service? Could, I mean, could we turn what's been kind of negative in the past into a positive as we move forward in the process of a brand-new business, a brand-new area for marijuana distribution in our city, and set some pretty, I don't want to say tough standards, but some things that we need to hold people accountable to, with some real teeth in the game to say, you're not following by the rules, so, no, sorry, you've missed that opportunity?
You know, I don't, I started, I had a fairly robust community host agreement, and I've been pairing it back ever since day one of the first agreement. And then we came back, I think in April of 2021, it might have been April 2020, it could have been before the pandemic, I can't even remember. I think it was before the pandemic, now that I think about it. And we retooled the entire community host agreement, which you have the current format. And that has pulled a lot of teeth out of that, because the community host agreement can't be seen as a device where we say to an applicant, hey, you want to do business in our city? Jump through these hoops. This is what you have to do. This is the way that it is. It's our way or the highway. What we can do, though, is through zoning and land use regulation, and through our general police powers, we can pass zoning bylaws or city ordinances that discuss, generally speaking, the types of impacts that you just addressed. So probably your best opportunity to do that will be either in Legislative Affairs Committee, or when that matter gets reported back from Legislative Affairs. So that would be the chance to do that. As far as the standard as to how a delivery business would work, I'll say, I've been working with Attorney Silverman for six years now, maybe five years, and I feel that we have a very good collaboration on trying to get the best for both of our respective clients, if you will. And, you know, if we can continue to work with, in a collaborative fashion, we would probably be best suited to do that. And I do, I have spoken with Attorney Silverman about, you know, some challenges that his particular client, in this case, may have as an applicant, having, you know, having run a business in the city of Pittsburgh before. And so we've talked about those things, and there may be, it may inform our zoning ordinance as to what we want to be in that zoning ordinance, so...
And I would just point out, the Cannabis Control Commission has extremely stringent requirements for the operation of these businesses. And undoubtedly, your, you know, the special permit, if we can obtain that, is going to track very closely that we must be in compliance with the Cannabis Control Commission regulations. You know, I'll probably be back here when we start talking about the zoning, but, you know, again, in terms of tracking the money, tracking the product, the operation, ensuring that we don't create a nuisance to the neighboring community, those are all very stringent, about the most stringent in the country, quite frankly. So I appreciate what I'm hearing here. You know, we have obviously some standards that we have to live up to, and we fully intend to do it.
Thank you. Attorney Silverman, to you specifically, who hires the drivers for, that are going to make the delivery?
So the company hires the drivers, but they all have to be background-checked through, again, that gets vetted through the Cannabis Control Commission to make sure that, you know, you're not hiring people with any, you know, disqualifying types of criminal convictions and that sort of thing, so...
Are they query-checked?
Yes.
Okay. And will, thank you, then to city solicitor Positary, would those drivers then have to come before our license board on a fairly regular basis for checkups and concerns? And I'm concerned about if this takes off, that we're going to have, you know, 56 cars up there zipping around the city, making delivery of non-medical marijuana to residents in this, you know, in our, in our community?
So, no, would be the answer, but I, and I don't know that we could create an ordinance that requires an additional licensing requirement, like a livery license, is what you're thinking, obviously. But I'd be happy to look into that a little bit more, and that could also be a topic of what we're talking about during the zoning. And if the zoning petition spawns us to file a new petition for a different ordinance under our licensing chapter, then maybe we could take a look at that. And I'd be happy to hear any comment or objection that Attorney Silverman would have, because he's, again, him and his firm...
It's, just so you understand my background, my law firm is an all-cannabis law firm. It's the only kind of law we do. So we've been doing this all over the state in about 100 communities with different clients. Most, most communities, there have been some communities that have done their own separate sort of licensing regimen. Most don't because they prefer, I think it's an administrative burden, and they have preferred to rely on the Cannabis Control Commission to do it. But we're not opposed to whatever the city believes is in its best interest in that regard. And if, you know, some sort of a licensing process is deemed appropriate here, we're happy to go through it.
And so just to restate the statement clearly, we license taxi drivers.
Yep.
I think the counselor was interested in, what if we have a special license for drivers of cannabis?
I think it's fine.
Any specific objection that you could think of?
No, I...
So it's possible. I would be happy to research that or look into it a little bit more.
I think the issue is, you know, there may be a certain amount of turnover with this particular type of job. Maybe there is with taxi drivers, too. So, but I think the question is, is, you know, if the city is going to want to go through a constant licensing process with every new person. We're not opposed to it, but I think, given that the state is already doing this, I think you should give some thought as to whether you want to do it, too. But it's fine with us.
Thank you. Attorney, Attorney Kuchar?
Thank you.
Yes.
You know, in regards to the special licensing, I mean, the Cannabis Commission does do all of the heavy lifting when it comes to that. There is a website, well, excuse me, a website, more like an app, that delivers alcohol, and it is in Massachusetts, it's in Pittsburgh, where you just go onto the app and say, you know, deliver, it's called Drizly or something like that, you know, deliver a case of White Claw to, you know, whatever. I mean, we don't require a special licensing to do that. I think we should just, in order to reduce the cost to the city, in order to be able to maximize our profit, just let the Cannabis Commission handle it.
While I have Chief Martino here, any, and while you're here and a present audience, any questions or concerns that you would have, yea or nay, preliminary or not, on this?
Well, at this point, the only matter in front of the council is the community host agreement. The gentleman and his company, they have a long way to go with the Cannabis Control Commission, so this is just, you need to keep in mind, this is the very first step. Four years ago, I had the opportunity to testify at the Cannabis Control Commission, specifically on this topic, home deliveries. And I'm glad to say that the Cannabis Control Commission listened to myself and a couple of other police chiefs on what we wanted to see as regulations. So I do have some thoughts, concerns. I'm going to have an opportunity to review a security plan. There's a lot of steps that we have to go through before they're actually making a delivery in the city. This is just step one, getting that community host agreement signed and pushed off to the mayor. That's just step one. Once we get to the point of planning and those other things, I do have some opinions on it, but I also have a very stringent cannabis control regulations that we can enforce through their, through their authority. So at this point, this evening, all I'd like to comment on is, this is the first step. At some point, they're going to have to come to me, to my department, for review on security matters. We will look at that. We will look at the regulations set forth by the CCC, and make an opinion, and give our opinion on the company and what they're proposing to do.
Thank you.
I hope that's helpful.
It is. Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time. Thank you.
We'll have to approve the order 18822.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 18822 for the host agreement. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll call.
Make a motion, will you, John?
Thank you, Counselor.
No, not yet. Attorney Positary.
Attorney Positary? Oh, another matter has been committed to Legislative Affairs for over two sessions now, and Rule 4.8 does say that shall be brought before the council, and that matter is 9222. And the chief is here in connection with that matter.
Yes, I was going to bring that up.
I'm sorry, I didn't want us to bring that, that's all.
No, I appreciate the reminder. So this is, again, I apologize, I thought I had taken up more items on the last Legislative Affairs Committee meeting than I actually had. This is 9222. This one, we actually did discuss fairly extensively as a council when we were hearing about the Main Street conversion. But this is the ordinance on civilian traffic control specialists, the one that would allow the chief to designate certain civilians and retired police officers and so forth to do traffic work.
We approved that on a 90-day temporary?
Yes, as a 90-day temporary, I believe we did, but we need to do it as an official ordinance change permanently.
President Zarela, since that is not on our agenda, we cannot vote on that tonight.
We can, actually. It's brought before us by operation of the rules.
I would think that a posting on the agenda per state law would be of higher authority than our city council rules, no?
It would be. Generally, anything that happens by operation of the rules would be implicitly noticed. However, if there is objection by the council, then I would suggest that this be committed to the special session, so that we can still get this taken care of as quickly as possible.
When is our special session, please?
Actually, Solicitor Positary, you were working with the clerk on that?
And she's on vacation, or she's going to training, so I can't confirm that it's been advertised.
Okay, she has been at a conference, yes, and...
I would move for discussion on 9222 on our next special city council meeting.
Second. I'm amenable to that. I have a motion and second to hold, is this on the motion to hold the item?
No, it's not the motion. I want to ask you a question. I want to ask you, is this very important? Does he need it right away? I mean, we talked about this before.
So there is a motion pending. This is a matter that wouldn't be immediately converted to ordinance, because we would still have to pass it through its readings. But the intent is simply to move it along as quickly as possible. Counselor Green, is this still on the motion to hold?
My question is, I think so. Are we butting up against the 90-day when it has to be voted on, or do we have time in that 90-day? Were we headed under a 90-day as a temporary?
Do you approve my motion?
Thank you, my Counselor. Go ahead, Chief.
I think we're confusing a couple of different items here. You're speaking about the 90-day proposal on the traffic control on Main Street. I brought this up to the Madam Clerk, 92, specifically 9222. That was the petition that I filed to create ordinance to allow me to hire civilian traffic control. That was discussed in front of the council as a whole, and voted on it, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. I did it in front of the council as a whole, and I believe it was on the 19th. So I think we might be confusing a couple of different matters here. This has nothing to do with the 90-day exclusion on the traffic regulations. This is specifically to allow me to solicit civilian employees to be traffic control specialists in the city of Pittsburgh. That gives them the authority to direct and control traffic, just like a full-time sworn police officer. I brought it up to Madam Clerk because while time isn't extremely urgent, it is and it isn't. I'm trying to get this out before the school year, so Pittsburgh State University criminal justice majors can apply and become civilian traffic control. And that's why I wrote an email to Madam Clerk and to our solicitor, asking where we were on this, because I thought, it was my assumption, we already done, we already completed the first reading of the ordinance after it was approved by the council a whole on that evening. And that's where this rule came up that I discussed with the solicitor just today.
Yes, to be perfectly honest, I remember having voted on it once before as well, and I'm not sure how or why it wound up in Legislative Affairs after having a first reading before the council. But that would, if that is correct, if we have put it through our first reading, and as I said, the clerk is not here, so I can't confirm. But if we have put it through its first reading already, then if we take it up at a special session before the end of the month, that will finalize it.
I was primarily inquiring to see when it was going to go to second reading, because I really can't take formal action on soliciting these part-time positions. I really can't take formal action on soliciting these part-time positions until it becomes embedded in ordinance form. So that was the reason I brought it forward.
All right, so Counselor Boshman?
Mr. Chair, one question for the chief. Are you telling me, will a guy like me be able to become stop signs?
I believe Counselor Green asked that question, actually, at the prior meeting.
I said no to Counselor Green and to you, it's no to.
Point of order, thank God. I think there's, is the motion still on?
It is rescinded.
The motion was rescinded.
Okay, and there was a concern or objection regarding discussing the petition that wasn't on the agenda. So may I just suggest, I think this was just a petition, I don't think it was an actual ordinance, if my memory serves me correctly, and I will prepare an ordinance, and we'll put the petition and the ordinance on the next agenda.
All right, and that being said, I do believe that due to a different exigency, we do end up actually having two special sessions scheduled before the end of the break, so that should allow us to pass this fully into law if it is the will of the council.
Whatever assistance the council can give me, I was just trying to attract those students when they come back in the fall, so.
Certainly, and again, I apologize for the confusion surrounding this.
Not necessary.
Thank you.
So we had a motion to hold to the next special session?
Renew the motion.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
I have a motion and second to hold this matter for the next scheduled special session. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. There being none, this matter will be held. We have one announcement from Counselor Schultz. The first in-person meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place Thursday, August 25th, 2022, from 4:00 until 5:30 in Room 203 at the Pittsburgh State Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate. That concludes our business for the evening.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion and second to adjourn, there being no objection. We are adjourned.
Thank you.